I'm here for business. And I think the community know me by now and what's gonna happen is Ms. Worden barking up the wrong tree. This council is barking up the wrong tree. What you say, Ms. Worden?
No, 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 no.
No, I wanna know what she said. She wanna act a fool, I can act a bigger fool.
Councilman Mays, we're not gonna do that.
See, I love politics and ignorance.
Hold on just a second.
I love ignorant folks.
Councilman Mays.
What did she say?
It's not, it's not.
I wanna know what she said since she wanna talk out loud. I want you to warn her and ask to remove her. She acting a fool today and you letting it go.
Councilman Mays.
Now, you want me to act a fool to the point that you warned me and wanna remove me 'cause she doing it? What you gonna do with her ass?
Councilman Mays, that's your first warning.
There's an appeal to the ruling of the chair. What's your job, Mr. Chairman?
I would like me to move him now.
Don't let white folks discriminate and treat them. Do your damn job. Keep her off my ass. Do your damn job. Remove her ass.
Remove him now, he's out of order.
You out of order.
And he's not gonna stay here.
She out of order, Kate Fields out of order, he's a damn fool. It's always the black man. Remove her white ass. I told you if don't have my authority with me, then she setting up that mess and you're playing.
If you don't, if you need, if you need somebody else to pull him out of here, get you some, get you some help.
I'm gonna get you out of here. Let these white folks fool you. I'm gonna get you out of here. You're a false alarm. Big bad man. Shut your mouth. We need to be disruptive when people don't follow council rules.
Mays doesn't deny that he causes a stir, but he says he is just using his First Amendment right at council meetings.
Try to portray me, the mayor, or anybody else in a bad light, I do stop the action. I, I become disruptive or highlight issues.
Mays says he believes Fields is trying to muddy up his name in response to a lawsuit he recently filed against some council members. While Field says it has nothing to do with the lawsuit. Field says state police are not at the time able to provide a trooper at every meeting. She says she will continue to press for one.
This is very disturbing to many council members, not necessarily for themselves, but for public safety.
And Mays told us today that he doesn't object to having a police presence at the meetings. In Flint, Rachel McCrery, W N E M, TV 5.
You're doing.
You've got the, you've got the floor.
That's an abuse of a point of information. Do I have the floor, do I?
Yes, you do.
Thank you very much.
What a fool.
I would like to say.
I'll tell you, I do ever stop talking, quit lying on me. Quit lying on me. Enough is enough. Quit lying on me. I'm tired of it.
You got the floor, so go ahead.
You got all kind of record, say it again, and I never stop.
Would you sit down, Mr. Mays, and conduct your.
No, I ain't gonna sit down. Would you quit curving your lips and fooling with people?
Saying you are out of order, this is a second notice, you're out of order, sit down and act with decorum.
Y'all carry me, I wouldn't sit down for you telling me to if I had to. You don't tell me what to do, you don't run nothing. I could've appealed her, but y'all keep running wrong. And the more you run wrong, the foolishest she act. You silly, I don't even like your tone. Who do you think you talking to publicly? Those silly, butt racist nasty white privileged that, I almost cussed. I ain't gonna say nothing right now, I'm gonna cool down. I ain't been down in none of your nets.
Whether I'm in your ward or not, if you sitting on that board, you supposed to listen to everything going on. But you playing on your phone.
No, I'm not playing on my phone, I'm taking care of business, I'm not studying what you talking about.
I know you ain't studied.
Okay, then, don't attack me. Speak on your business, don't deal with what I do personally. Yeah, but it ain't to attack me personally, ma'am, I don't know who you is. Okay, well, get the facts right, I ain't playing, I'm grown and I'm serious, that's your words. Don't make no personal attack, they told you that at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, God bless.
Speaking on behalf of many members of the city of Flint, I am appalled by your lack of respect for your fellow members who serve on this council. Your lack of respect shown towards city administration, your lack of respect shown towards administrative staff who are here to support you and this council. By showing all individuals just cited lack of respect, you are also disrespecting the public of the city of Flint. You are very skillful at manipulating your words so that the truth turns into a lie. We all have opportunity to look at video of things that you have said and how coarse your language has been as you have spoken to your fellow constituents and our city clerk. Councilwoman Burns was absolutely correct in what she said to you and that you were horribly disrespectful to City Clerk Inez Brown. You even said to her that you would have her removed from this facility. That was reprehensible. Your behavior is reprehensible and you can continue to look away from me if you like. Cowards, look away, Mr. Mays.
Ms. Harper, I'm watching the clock.
Don't interrupt me, I have the clock right now.
You don't interrupt, your time is up.
So I would appreciate you affording me the opportunity to speak.
I'm giving you your first warning.
You're a bully.
Um, Mr. Metcalf.
I appeal to the ruling of the chair.
Can you come forward?
You are a bully, Mr. Mays. When you don't get what you want, you bully people and it needs to stop.
You out of order.
So are you.
Okay, well, right now, you need to be quiet, we got an appeal to the ruling of the chair, 'cause you been out of order.
I shouldn't have to tell Mr. President fifty-five times and you're trying to, I guess, have decorum and be fair and balanced and just trying to keep the meeting going so we can go.
What's your point?
Ms. Lewis, you have talked about folks and done wrong though, ain't you? You might not be in it to doing it now today, but you have done that with me, Ms. Burns, and anybody, you have done that, ain't that a fact?
Well, what's the fact, if you can just sit your tail down in the seat, then you no part in the meeting.
I ain't got no tail, girl.
Mr. Mays, that's improper. You're out of order, Mr. Mays.
Now, she, or the, when they say, "I've got tails," that means something.
Mr. Mays, you do not have the floor, Dr. Lewis has the floor.
I mean, too often, we go through this and the meeting could've been over with probably about an hour or two earlier if we wouldn't have to put up with this kind of foolishness.
So, I would like to get straight. If we have to follow the rules, can't you get the fool on the end of the county to follow the rules too?
Look, Mr. President, looked like he was pointing at me, but hey, look, every time he holler and call me a fool and then standing there, I want him out of here now. I want him out, you been born, I want you out, you a fool. That's why you finna be foolish and then want me out of here right now.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I wanna say to this council and to the public and to Mr. Whittegan in particular in this administration, how dare you? How dare you? We're like the board of directors, the trustees of a multimillion dollar corporation. How dare you be, walk away? Who do you think you are? Who do you think you are? Maybe you know this council and maybe they know you. I don't know you. And I don't think the majority of the public know you, but what you did was appalling. You come up here, you flip it, you come descending, and I don't know who you think you are. You mean if we was in the street? I'm at eleven oh one South Saginaw, that's in the street. I live at one twenty-five East Russell, that's in the street. Here you a self-proclaimed dope dealer, said it at the, at the county jail and gonna tell me something about how you in the street. Additions to the agenda regardless of what you thought, but I'm gonna speed this meeting along. We on changes and additions to the agenda and one of the changes or addition is special order, you may proceed. We ain't on special order, you can proceed.
All I'm asking, Council President Mays, is that you allow me the opportunity to, when I'm, I have the floor, that you allow me to continue my thought without cutting me off. Because it seems like every time I want to speak and it may not be what you may want it to say, you always find a way to cut me off. And I am privileged to be on this council, just like my colleagues was elected to be. So when you allow me the space to speak, I will appreciate if you will not cut me off and let me finish my thought without you cutting me off, 'cause I do not need you to help me figure out what I'm about to say. Back to my special order, I thought we were on a special order and this through the chair to the clerk, if, if you can explain to us, was Councilwoman Dr. Lewis out of order? And is it not allowed for a council to add an agenda item on the agenda without going through the council president? Is the protocol to go strictly through Council President Mays? Or will, can the council send an email like Dr. Lewis explained so eloquently that she sent the email to the clerk to add this special order just so we can recognize someone that has been doing great things? We done took a lot of time just wanting to acknowledge somebody because she went through you. So is it inappropriate for us to send an email to the clerk to have some put on agenda?
Mr. Quinn, Mr. Murphy, I know who is through, I'm a chair. You said through me to her.
But I wanted you to let me finish.
Mr. Murphy, please. That's where the problem come, you can flick your hand at me if you want, but you had already said you thought we was on special order. I was correcting you, we on agenda change. Ms. Brown can answer the question, I can answer it too. Maybe even Ms. Herkenroth. Go ahead, Ms. Brown. Quit flicking your hand at me, I ain't studying you. That's ignorant.
I ruled Mr. Mays out of order because this is probably the third or fourth time that he has been asked to stay respectful, germane, and conduct himself with decorum in these chambers in this meeting. I stand by that ruling, is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Eric, this motion was on the six hundred dollars. My colleague was mimicking us, talking about us going down in the mayor's office that has nothing to do with this and my colleagues, y'all heard this. Now, see, if we, if we do this, then we wrong, we being ruled out of order. Y'all heard this. Instead of him staying on topic of the six hundred dollars motion, he mimicking us and is rude and disrespectful to us as, as his colleagues to be able to be allowed to sit up there and say that stuff and I just don't understand how we could support allowing our colleagues to sit up here and mimic and make these accusations based on something they don't know. And we gotta sit here and listen to it. And then, me, there's only so much I can take. 'Cause I listen to people and people be like, Quincy, don't say nothing. Just sit there and don't say nothing, and I sit here as long as I can and don't say nothing. And let him constantly, constantly go on and on and on talking about his interpretation, what he think about us, 'cause based on our vote, 'cause we don't vote his way. Well, he didn't, he didn't put me here. The residents did. And I think we all should be treated fairly here. But when somebody wanna clap back, then we wrong. I, I'm not scared of the councilman in the first world and whatever he decide he wanna do, that's on him. You wanna recall me, do whatever you got to do, but you go respect me. And to sit here and let this man sit up here and make these accusations and make these comical jokes about us and we don't say nothing, we don't point the order and put him in check, that means we allowing him to teach us, treat us however he want to. And he ain't gonna treat me no any kind of way based on somebody thinking I need to sit here and shut up and don't say nothing and let him talk to us any kind of way. Let him talk to y'all any kind of way. He ain't talking to me any kind of way. That's just that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mays.
I'm talking to the people of the city of Flint about him. Ain't talking to him. He know it's true, he get called down there. Mr. Piper was in the public dog with Mr. Neely on this issue just the other day, it was on the news. He can get mad if he want to.
Okay, Mr. Mays, you're not germane to the topic.
Oh, yes, I am, you ruled me out of order for telling the truth.
Mr. Mays, I'm ruling you out of order for not germane to the topic. What's your point?
You can't interrupt me when I got the floor discussing my argument while I'm gonna vote against you ruling me out of order. You didn't interrupt him. It ain't funny to me, Ms. Herkenroth, you out of order.
Be clear, let, let me, let me be clear, sir, excuse me. You know what, and I stopped my day too. What are you talking?
Officer, you out of order, you can leave.
You ain't got the backbeat.
Okay, well then, I'm asking you to leave so we can conduct this hearing, officer.
You ain't gotta ask for me, I'm already.
Okay, then, be quiet while you do it.
It's a shame.
You a shame. We just had a problem at the school board. If you get up out your seat here, it's gonna be different from the school board. We got police. Mr. Murphy, we in a hearing, leave quietly. I ain't gonna be your boy. Hey, officers, can you help get him out of here?
If they not put their hands on me, I'm leaving on my own.
You gonna get arrested based on our rules. And if they put their hands on you, I'm gonna advise you not to jerk away or resist.
Every time you turn around, y'all wanna call the police on somebody. 'Cause somebody disagree with you.
Right now, they on you.
Right now, you.
Man, sir, if they put their hands on you, I'm gonna suggest you not make it more complicated. You interrupting this meeting, you out of order. We got limited time, can y'all get him out of here? My point of order is that if he make a personal attack toward me, I'm gonna make three back, even if I get arrested. You can't tolerate him talking a certain way, I ain't studying it.
Mr. Mays, this is your second warning.
Yeah, may I, may I be excused on this second warning?
You may be excused, Mr. Mays.
My point of order is supposed to be on a motion and it then turn to me every time he talk is me. And I'm getting tired of it.
Mr. Mays.
And I'm Clinton Murphy, and I just think I'm studying you.
Mr. Metcalf, Mr. Mays, you are entirely.
Oh, I don't know, I didn't went over, 'cause he out discriminating toward.
That is incredibly.
You got little ears that hear what you wanna hear and I ain't studying you.
Metcalf.
I ain't studying you.
Mr. Mays, you will not be allowed back in this meeting.
You ain't got to tolerate, I don't tolerate you. I ain't studying you.
Okay, we are still in the first round of discussion, is there any other member of council who wishes to speak in this first round of discussion? Yes, Dr. Lewis. Mr. Mays, you've been excused. Dr. Lewis, you have the floor.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Dr. Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to remove Eric Mays from his seat for thirty days.
There is a motion on the floor to remove Eric Mays from his seat for thirty days.
And it's getting on my nerves. And Mr. Murphy keep interrupting with point of information and point of orders when I'm talking and I could interrupt him repeatedly, then he throw his hands up.
Throw rocks at me and focus on trying to be a good president and run this business and take care of the business of the city of Flint. But no, you wanna just keep on bringing my name up, keep on talking stuff. The stuff you be talking about is not, this is not the time and place. The stuff that you be saying about me, you need to be saying to me in the streets somewhere, you don't need to be talking that here. You need to talk somewhere like that to me in the streets where men, you can go head up with each other verbally or however you wanna do it. Can't nobody break us up. Physical, doing nothing with you, 'cause if I, if I wanted to go there, I'll tell you exactly. Eric Mays, meet me outside, 'cause I'm ready to whatever you. You ain't gonna get me to go there since you wanna talk that, but you must want, you must wanna do it.
Point of information, no, I just don't want elder abuse.
You must want some physical altercation, 'cause you keep bringing it up.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
What's your point?
Are you gonna sit and allow this man to talk all that tough talk talking about what, what he ain't scared, and you sit there and condone it? May I be excused again, and if it, if it continue, I'll come back. We on a point of order.
There is a point of.
Point of order.
There was a point of information called.
Point of order. Did you say something, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, I did say something.
What did you say?
I said, "point of information."
What is your point of information? Since you wanna say it like that, what is? And he talking about in an elected seat, I ain't gonna let nobody talk about me. I'm gonna talk about you, Trump, and any politician I want. Who do we think he is that you gonna rule? Mr. Mays, you're out of order, it's your first warning and you talking about it. Hell, I'm telling the truth. Talk about who I want. They talk about me? Hell, they talked about Jesus. How did he get above Jesus? Talk about who you want. Now, that ain't no point of order, but yeah, I can prove you spend more time with me, they got witnesses up here. You checking me, 'cause I'm talking to witnesses. Now, you out of order, that's your first warning. You want me to get strict, there you go, now you got your first warning.
Excuse me, to my colleagues, I'll be removing myself, so he ain't gotta give me no word.
Well, God bless you. Take your toys and go home.
Take your toys.
You out of order, I can help speed you up.
You can't help speed you up.
Officer, can you come and keep him from interrupting this meeting? Help him out.
I would not let him make you leave.
Hold up. Everybody wait. Just a bunch of nonsense. I be voting to move these resolutions to council, but it didn't take all that.
Hold on, wait a minute, council.
Ain't nothing going on around me, is it?
Yeah, it was, and that is not, that is not behavior.
What happened?
Yeah, you do not jump like you gonna jump on, we don't do that. We don't do that.
No, 'cause I self-defence myself and been and did something.
That, that is, no.
You know, that's how I caught my first felony at age twenty-eight.
Councilman Mays.
I'm the type guy, you shoot me in the head, I'll die, but you ain't gonna play with it.
Your time is up or I'm gonna have to, excuse me, thank you.
'Cause I'm, I'm full grown and I don't play. Hell, yeah, I know what happened.
Councilman Mays, please refrain from your profanity.
Hell, yeah, I know what happened. I had the floor.
You had the floor, but I'm trying to tell you, I don't wanna be here all night.
Mr. President, you ain't gotta be here no night. I don't have to say another word. You let all these other people, when you here the other day when I let Kate Fields and even them go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
You're not listening to me, I'm saying we've got a second round going and you're not asking them questions, you're giving commentary. You don't have to, that's unnecessary.
Well, you don't have to whisper, I don't have to tell people I can't hear you. Let me be me.
You got one more minute and then I'm gonna move on to others and then we gonna go out second round.
You take that minute and stick it up your council seat. You ain't gonna put no one minute on me. Keep interrupting when I got the floor, that's the point.
Councilman Mays.
That's my point, Mr. President.
May I say something in its entirety, please?
Not when you tell me I got one minute.
I'm saying, you've been talking for five minutes.
I wouldn't care.
Well, I do, because.
So go home. Go home if you don't wanna do this job.
Councilman Mays.
Don't tell me in front of these folks, I got one minute like you threatening me.
With you, that's not gonna happen. I'm not gonna, I'm not willing to sit here and go back.
So let me finish, I done asked multiple questions.
You got one minute, you got one minute to wrap up the first round.
Stick it up your council seat. Tell me I got one minute.
Councilwoman Fields.
And I ain't gonna give up my opportunity and my seat, 'cause you saying one minute and we just, there's no time limit.
Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, number one, I don't.
I promise you it's not.
I promise you it is.
Proceed.
I don't understand why you've not removed Mr. Mays after his comments to you, but.
Now, may I say something?
After, so the clerk ain't got.
No, I'm gonna say something. I do not, I don't mind.
Point of order, let them call the vote, point of order.
This person telling me, he don't know.
Point of order, question vote, point of order.
So you don't sit here.
I'm gonna sit up here and shake my head even though I ain't got no hat and sunglasses on. And I wouldn't give up what?
Think about it.
I'm thinking and talking.
Well, you know.
And know what?
What I was getting ready to say.
No, say it in my.
You know every other doggone thing.
Say it, say it.
I don't have to say it.
But then, don't say I'm not. Point of order is Jackie Poplar. I'm gonna tell it and you gonna shake your head at me, I'm gonna shake my head back whether I got a hat or sunglasses on or not. Point of order, you don't be a sad face, they gonna vote. Let them call the vote.
So just shut up.
I know what you doing and I'm playing with you.
I'm sorry, this person, I'm sorry.
You should be sorry, that was wild. Now, you shut up. You ain't my mama or my daddy. They did, they did.
I wouldn't be the mama.
She way out of order, Madam Chair, y'all done had me removed for less. I ain't studying you, you'll never be my mama. You wanna go hard, I'm gonna go hard with you. And then I might wear me a church hat and some sunglasses next week.
You've been following down.
I might wear me some sunglasses and a hat next week. Ms. Papa, you don't intimidate me. You don't intimidate me, I'm not gonna shut up for you, Kate Fields, Scott Kincaid and the.
They knew they supporting.
I ain't studying you. I ain't studying you. You might can intimidate the rest of them, but and they talk to one twiz like that, 'cause I ain't the one. I ain't studying you. I ain't studying you, ma'am.
Please, Councilman Mays, I beg of you, please. Patiently, please. You could get your point across, but we cannot have that argument of tone and voice, that's very disrespectful to department.
Well, let me try it this way, Mr. Davis, because it's very disrespectful when the mayor and his guy lie and talk to me and put stuff out there in the public that's very insulting and disrespectful. So if that's all it is, the tone, let's try this tone. Mr. Edwards, can you name the five appointees that don't require council approval? As many as you can, please, right now, sir?
I sent the, I did send the information to the council president.
I'm proud of the council and I asked you to put it in my mailbox if you had to put it on a piece of notebook paper that ain't gathered up yet, so.
If I'm not mistaken, everybody's.
Well, remember, we're gonna talk like this and try to get this business done.
Point of information, if I may, Mr. Mays.
Madam President.
Mr. Mays, are you aware that Mr. Edwards did not just send it to the council president? He sent it to all of council.
Let me say this in response to your point of information. Would you go back and look at the tape and I told him to write it and put it in my mailbox on a piece of notebook paper? They had to, Ms. Galloway, I've been doing it for six years since I've been here. They did not turn it into the staff and put it in my mailbox. And I'm gonna tell Mr. Davis again for the record, that's what I request. And I'mma tell Mr. Davis again for the record, that's what I request. And if you email it to the staff, I get emails from Hershey's Chocolate and everybody else. Call it to the staff's attention, print it out and put it in my mailbox. It's too many emails. So that's what I requested and I'm still talking like that. Yeah, I'm positive, a hundred percent.
We will take a five-minute recess.
Now, you know, the voters offered me the chance to be elected, offered me equal opportunity to speak my mind and represent them. They don't dictate my right to speak. The freedom of speech is a constitutionally protected right. It's also a right up on our city charter. Discrimination based upon political orientation and race has no place in our society.
Any last words?
Um, I hope a good lawyer, that my last word, I hope a good civil rights lawyer come and help me remedy this repeated different treatment. My colleagues, it's obvious, they don't know the rules.
And they want us to be able to speak and was effectively muzzling us. We had broken no rules and had violated, um, no codes of conduct. He would give us the floor and as we would begin to speak, he would immediately interrupt us and prevent us from speaking. He monopolized the hearing conversation contrary to the accepted role of a chair. He also used parliamentary techniques incorrectly and in an improper manner. Mr. Mays is not only an incompetent chairperson, but he also engages in harassment via intimidation and threats, racial slurs, and he shouts and cowers over us in a threatening manner. This statement is an attempt to bring attention to this unacceptable behavior and to inform our constituents that your representatives are not allowed to have a voice for you. We are asking you, city residents and our constituents, to stand up with us and demand that this behavior be stopped. Please contact the council president, Herb Woodbury, and the city attorney, Angela Wheeler, and let your opinions be known. Now, we would like to share with you some questions that we would have liked to ask AE Comm last night if we had been allowed to.
Hello, I want to note that since last night's hearing, you just had AE Comm there, I'm only listing those questions that, some of the questions that we would have liked to have asked AE Comm. There are additional questions we'd like to ask of many other people, uh, but since last night's hearing, we were prevented from asking questions, these were for AE Comm. One, it's very apparent from the predictive model maps that AE Comm is not using the most effective methods to identify and remove lead service lines. Who specifically made the decision to change city policy on these methods, which resulted in a seventy-one percent hit rate, uh, initially to the method that you are now using, which has less than a twenty percent hit rate? The hit rate, of course, is finding lead and galvanized lines. Did AE Comm make this decision? Did Mayor Weaver or someone in her administration make that decision? Who specifically is the responsible party? Because it's apparent it's a very bad decision. Is there any documentation or correspondence that verifies who and when this decision was made and why? We may have to FOIA for that information. Why would you waste our valuable funds and resources to prioritize and concentrate on excavations in areas that are predicted to have copper lines? That makes no sense. Number two, what specific tasks or work do the following companies provide for AE Comm on behalf of Flint Projects? Can you please provide proof of competitive solicitations and procurement that you used to hire these companies listed in slide seven of your presentation? And slide seven had the companies below and I'll read this. Also, please provide the contracts and copies of all invoices that you used to compile these numbers in your presentation. According to AE Comm, the company DLC has billed to date from May to September, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, uh, nine hundred and ten dollars. ARCO has billed six hundred and sixty thousand, uh, dollars plus from May through September. E Holdings, over a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. The total through September, from May to September, is over a million dollars. The questions are, what specific expertise, expertise do Sam Cox and Martin Cooper from ARCO Systems provide to AE Comm that AE Comm does not already possess? Their invoices mostly state consulting at the rate of three hundred and three dollars an hour. Question four, who is the individual and job title position that is in charge of hiring your subcontractors? Have you ever been directed by Mayor Weaver or someone in her administration to hire any particular or specific company? If so, by whom? Number five, who is the individual and job title position that verifies work, um, that all work done is eligible for reimbursement from state and federal grants? Last question, who is the individual and job title position that is in charge of hiring your subcontractors? The first step in investigation is to find out who is responsible for what. So that would be the first series of questions. And once you have answers to that, then you know you have the right person to continue asking questions of under oath. So those are just some of the questions we would like to ask AE Comm. Unfortunately, we never got the opportunity.
Press conference that had been called by Councilwoman Fields and Word. When I heard about it, I became curious as to see what would be said. I've heard what's been said here today. It is a fact that on Monday, we vote for reorganization. So I see some political motivation here from two councilpersons who just don't have leadership positions. When you look at the way we got here, Ms. Worden in the primary had about eighty-nine votes. Scott Kincaid had a debacle, he ran for mayor. She's legally seated. Ms. Fields, when I look at her vote count, you can double it and it does not reflect my vote count. I've been elected by the residents of the first ward and I support the mayor. The mayor doesn't have a technical role in our proceedings as it relates to our rules. I've heard Ms. Fields and Ms. Worden give this media inaccurate accounts of what's happened. I've been called a racist by Ms. Fields in a public meeting. It's a personal attack, it's against our rules. Last night, review the tape, she called me a bully. It's a personal attack. I gave her her first warning. I would not tolerate a break in of the rules as it relates to personal attacks. When she called me a racist, I said, I don't know if you're a racist or not, but you're serious erechuses, erechmasuses. And then spread it all across the city of Flint. That's the term I attribute to those who attempt to attack me. They're masuses. I don't know if they're racist, but it seems as though race is a factor. Last night, if you review the tape, Ms. Worden, who seems to be, well, she is white, Ms. Fields, who is white, and Mr. Griggs, who is white, they got out, they walked out of the meeting. Nobody put them out as a matter of fact when she broke the rules. And I can share the council rules with you and make the personal attacks in front of the public and the media as it relates to this chairman. I gave her her first warning. My job as chairman is to prioritize the business. We had AE Comm, their time, just like mine, Ms. Worden and Ms. Fields, time is valued. My duty, the council rules gives me a duty to prioritize the business. The business at hand was to ask questions of the witnesses, not make statements, not give theories. As a matter of fact, if you look at the agenda, I said, before we even started, I spent on every agenda, the council, we developed the rules as a rule of five or more. I think what Ms. Worden and Ms. Fields frustration is, as we go into the Monday reorganization meeting, they want leadership positions and they might not have the votes. And so now, after they voted, the record would show they voted not to have this hearing. But when the majority voted to have the hearing and we started to proceed with the hearing, seem like they are on a witch hunt or they want the hearing to go the way they wanted to go. And it's only two of them, they're not the majority. The decisions that we make is five or more and they seem to be frustrated. And now they stoop low to make personal attacks. I'm a non, no-nonsense type of councilperson, a no-nonsense type of a chairperson. I'm a Christian person. Ms. Fields, I don't know, she might not have the same beliefs. And I don't like to hear people stand up in front of the media and make false accusations and outright lies. They said they have not broken any rules. In fact, they did. I've told you about the rules of personal attacks. I've, I've alluded to the duty I have as a chair to keep stuff prioritized and focused. Ms. Worden repeatedly used points of order, points of information as an attempt to try to take the floor. We entertained her points of information and points of order and then we ruled on that they were improper. They could have asked questions last night had they stayed. They left and then the five of us proceeded to ask questions.